How we operate as far as employees and benefits and I mean if we switch all this around, like I said, it's a lot more responsibility there. All these funding requirements, they've come up with these what are called key performance indicators. So for each one of these requirements, we have to have key performance indicators. We'll be turning on data to prove that we're actually, you know, obviously doing what they want, you know, what's expected. Although we can, like even speaking of, we can subcontract out some of this money to other organizations. So if there are organizations, say, addressing opiate abuse or diabetes, so we can subcontract that out to other committee members. So the money doesn't all have to stay in the local health department as long as we ensure that these guidelines are being met.
Any emails? They're coming under any care last night?
No. Well, let's see. I sent you guys, I think I sent all this information to you probably two weeks ago. I sent it, she said she couldn't get ahold of you, so I sent it on one time. So it came under me. And then the state would have sent you the email, probably came under government public health commission, or it would have been from Indiana State Department of Health. They're the ones that sent the webinar. I just sent this information to you. Like the week before. I think I tried to call two, I think Wendy, I realized I sent the wrong number. I put it down wrong, but. So like I said, you don't have to decide that today. And the deadline's not until September 1st, but I wanted to come before you make awareness. And they may even, the states come up with their own resolution if you want to opt in, if that's the information. But like I said, the problem I see is if we opt out and other counties opt in surrounding us, it will see a loss of employees. Which other counties are looking at too? We've all looked at that and said, well, I wonder what they're going to raise their salaries to. I don't wonder what they're going to raise it to. Because we've seen that happen in local health departments all over the state, that somebody raises their salaries, people move to that county, that county needs training them, and that happens in all sorts of government positions, but.
And I have that here somewhere.
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, I was, I was.
Did you? Okay.
I would recommend.
Okay, and that's fine, yeah.
I was just remembering before, did you recently do?
Yeah, I'll find the link and I can send it to you. Yeah, sure. It had, I think it was about a month ago. I want to say it was in May sometime that they did the webinars. Because they did one for all the local health departments, and then they did a separate one for commissioners council. It was pretty similar, actually, to the one we saw. But I can send it again, and then if you got.
Oh, I got it. What was it? I think thirty percent match. Now, is that an accurate or?
We've tried to figure, it's somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent is the match that's expected. And like I said, when you look back over previous years, we've actually exceeded that match. So that's why I'm saying that, and if you look to, like I said, our usual amount that we get in eleven fifty-nine is always between twenty, two-hundred-and-twenty-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand, if I remember right. And if you look at, say, twenty-twenty-five, so our match is going to be between ninety-eight and a hundred-and-thirty-one thousand. So it's not even close to what the counties are already putting in. Again, the state's not saying that counties should decrease funding to local health departments, but at the same time, there's nothing that's going to stop them. And the way I look at it is if we're raising salaries in health department, that's causing controversy among other courthouse staff, then, you know, obviously that money can be used towards other things that the county could also use that money for. So rather than here, yeah.
Well, I got a question.
Sure.
What is the line item that you're comparing it to in the existing budget?
We're comparing it to the entire eleven fifty-nine. Is that what you mean, that one?
Yeah.
Because right now, what the state puts in is the local health maintenance fund trust, and that's the eleven sixty-eight and the twelve oh-six. That's what the state picks in. Eleven fifty-nine is our main fund, and that total is around, like I said, I think this year is two-twenty-nine, two-hundred-and-twenty-nine thousand.
So you're saying that the county's eleven fifty-nine.
Mm-hmm.
Exceeds, or?
Exceeds, yes.
Exceeds the match.
Yes, exactly. And so.
So it would be no new money?
No new money. So the first year, like I said, is the average of the last three. So if last year, I think, was the highest, it's actually going to be a little lower than last year. And this is in twenty-twenty-four, of course. But going forward in years two, three, four, and five, then all they require is a twenty, we've looked, the calculations are a little differently. But somewhere between twenty and twenty-five percent of the total the state gives. So when, when we say we get the minimum, so one-hundred-and-ninety-seven-thousand, or actually, if you look at twenty-twenty-five, so if we take the minimum, the three-hundred-and-ninety-five-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty-seven dollars, then that match minimum is ninety-eight thousand. So, and that's on for two. So that means, that's ninety-eight thousand versus two-hundred-and-twenty-nine. So that's the minimum will be required to put in. And like I said, what the state is looking at this is shifting more of local health funding to the state level rather than the county level. Because what they found with this commission is that there's a huge variety in funding to local health departments. And then there's also a huge variety in funding, I think several months ago, I might have given you that chart that shows that life expectancy varies widely among counties in Indiana. In fact, there's an eight-year difference between, I think, Hamilton County, which has the highest life expectancy, and Spat County, which has the lowest. And we're actually somewhere in the middle. Carroll County was, I think, maybe three or four years off the average life expectancy. But what they found is, like I said, if you look at funding for local health, I mean, it doesn't match exactly, but in general, what they found is that there was such a huge variety in funding that many counties don't even have a full-time public health nurse. Obviously, we have one, which is better than some of the more rural, smaller counties. But what they are trying to do is kind of equalize a little bit better what people receive from their local health departments, so.
There is a precedent for this. It used to have local public welfare boards. And the, the welfare department used to be locally funded. You had a local welfare board. And there were so much variation from county to county, and so many complaints about the welfare budget, that the state began transitioning to funding and, and control of the public welfare function. I mean, counties used to control everything in, in public welfare. So this is a good thing. It needs to be instated.
Funded, yeah.
So, and, and law enforcement is another area that needs to be looked at by the legislature. You're having jurisdictions steal one another's employee, you know, to go to the highest. Because people are so mobile anymore, they'll go where, where the dollar's higher. And so to keep a, a good level of service in Carroll County, I think you want to opt into this and, and encourage the state to take that. More than seventy percent of it.
So what actually, in due terms, does it say that we, we accept this?
We, there's a resolution, I think.
Yes, I have. Actually, there's a copy.
I've got it.
You've got it. They said, I was going to say, I think they sent that to you. So you can make a resolution.
I'll bring a resolution to the next meeting, so you can take action on it.
Yeah, and the nice about it too is that they're not taking away any local control. Because that was a big thing that the legislature said, is that, you know, we're interested in better funding, but we don't want local control taken away. And that's what's happened. The, the council will still be in charge of budgeting, approving our budget for all of this money. So, like I said, you guys opt in or opt out, you decide. But then everything, even in this fund, that state money, will still go before council for approval. So it's not like it's. It is. Well, like we, well, like we would do with the twelve oh-six, and it's, it's basically, they're getting rid of the tw- the local health maintenance fund and the trust fund. So they're going to roll that into this and name it, I think it's called, I don't know what number it's going to have, but Indiana first, or Health First. And so it will be treated the same way twelve oh-six and, twelve oh-six and eleven sixty-nine are treated. Not eleven sixty-nine, yeah, eleven sixty. Eleven sixty-eight. The numbers.
High paying.
Yeah, so that it's, it's, like I said, even though it's state money, it will still have to be appropriated to council, the same way those two funds are. So council will still have oversight.
So you're saying that eleven fifty-nine is the county contributions, even though it's just like a regular budget?
Yes, yes. So eleven fifty-nine will still stay there. That will still be county contributions. And we don't have to move all the salaries out. I mean, that's something that we'll have to look about. I, I was just worried about that.
So we just made a motion, the table was feeling that way.
Yeah, that's fine. And then I'll try to make sure and send the webinar to everybody. So, oh, yes. Oh, reservation.
Be a word.
Thank you.
Then we saw what happened two or three years ago. And we lost some of our rights. And they technically, you know, we got to have responsibility ourselves. But if you get by in the bigger bill, that there works. About money.
But the thing there is she said those, that we still have the control.
For now.
For now. We've got to have a nice thing about it.
So this is table till July fifth? Is that what you said?
Lordman?
Table till July fifth, is that what you said?
I'm sure we are. Last motion and a second, the table was to July fifth. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
I think we would be, I, I agree completely with Lord, but I, I think we foolish not to go with this program. I'm looking through these funding requirements like that. It looks like you do about all those.
We do, we do quite, we do quite a lot of them. There's a couple of them, maternal, fetal health. We don't do some of the fatality review. There's a big one, and there's a separate grant that we've opted into now for a, a school liaison. So that's a school liaison. They've had this grant available for a couple of years now. And we've just now opted into it, but basically to have a nurse or health professional work with the schools and help them.
Do we have any facility-related eye lashes?
We don't, not in this county. I know, I saw.
I see, but I'm like.
We, we don't, you know, the state added that just recently to our tattoo ordinances or at the state level. But we, we thought that too, we're like, why is that part of our job and not cosmetology at the state level? But it's because the eye involves bodily fluids. And so that's considered a health risk, is what.
I didn't know there was such a thing.
Yes, there are several in surrounding counties that do eyelash.
Eyelash extensions.
Yes, it's part of our, we, we would inspect them as we would a tattoo establishment.
Scotty, I want you to be the first one to volunteer.
Yeah. Yeah, that's what I mean.
I think there are certain cultural groups that do more of this eye extension than others. I mean, eye, eyelash extension, right? I see in certain areas and cities that there are, there's a lot of shops like that.
Actually, I said, as a health officer in Howard County, see, we have several in Howard County. And it's, like I said, they're just separate. They, some of them though do the eyeliner tattooing, which is also, then they fall under the tattoo ordinance, where they tattoo on permanent eyeliner. So I, I don't, I don't know a whole lot about.
Imagine wearing some, your tattoo on my eye, or?
Yeah, no, it's, it's actually fairly popular, I guess.
What are you looking at me for?
Di.
Yeah, that actually is illegal in Indiana. Scleral tattooing is, is illegal in Indiana.
Tattooing DI?
Yes, the sclera, yeah, the white part.
Change the color of it from like white to red, or black, or, yeah.
Yeah, that's illegal, actually. Don't worry about that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Curpsy, that state treats roads for all grants. We're all real bad.
I think the study's good. I didn't like the fact that the city of Delphi would be, the taxpayers of Delphi would be paying double for this, because the city did opt in to pay some of this. But then, you know, the old tax, the way I said, I mean, if we're going to do it for the other towns, probably the city of Delphi, too. I'll make a motion that we participate in curtsy, street roads. That way you get our intersections that are dangerous, looked at, and possibly some funding for it, and again.
Yes, I've participated in the transportation committee meetings with Tepene County, who holds the grant. And one of the areas for the safety grant would be that we've identified, would be potential is Third Street and Flora, where the county highway garage is, and the trailer park there. They walk on the streets like the kiddos do, try to, try to get to the park. And it's just, I think you guys see it all the time. And so this would be a scenario where they explained to this grant, where they would set up cameras essentially, and they would take like snapshots and buzz out, they wore out faces. They, but the goal would be to identify how many people were walking in the street, and traffic patterns, and, and near collisions. And then this would provide kind of a evidence for grant, providing grants to make those areas. So we wouldn't have to necessarily pay for a sidewalk on Third Street if the grant, if this information provided enough unsafe, I guess, data. So I think that, that was the, that was the way they were, Lawpy, I was explaining to us. And I, I'm not working with curpsy, but this is similar.
So you got to make a motion, or?
Yeah, I did. I made a motion to participate. I think the other part of the, we'll go ahead and do the, is how we go to fund it. I think we sent that to council. Did they talk about that? So, I can't remember, twenty-five thousand? Something like that. Yeah.
I don't remember.
It's in your letter. Do you, you still have your letters pronounced, Mike? Two letters. I have one.
Four. Curpsy, region safe streets and roads grant. I actually fund twenty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty options. How do we handle this?
Is there a resolution that goes with that? I, I don't have my curtsy notes.
I will take that back. It's on the agenda this afternoon for an additional curtsy.
Could be an additional appropriation.
Yeah, it's on the list. In case you did decide, then it will be very this afternoon in your joint meeting.
So it's like, you're good to go.
That's just an advertisement.
My motion's to participate in the grant. Advertise to, for additional.
So do we have to, we have to make a statement to, something to? Well, we're not signing anything. So I think your motion.
You don't have to sign.
Oh, you do get it. That's what I don't have. There was.
What was it? Was it June the third?
Yeah.
I think it was.
Yeah, I think that's why they wanted.
And, but we also have to hit it in recentism tomorrow, this afternoon, is because the deadline, you have to get it to the council within ten days, too.
So motion would be authorized, this will be signed this afternoon if council approves. And don't sign it right now.
Okay, I'm in my motion.
Okay, tell me what your motion is.
Motion to participate in.
The person.
And pending this afternoon, being the council for funding.
That way they can sign it this afternoon, and council will please.
You have a second? We got a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Yeah, that motion passed. Now we're down to, we did Lyons' application for wall backs, here for now. Sign up. Three hours of eight to four on July first, up to six signs on the courthouse lawn, advertising canal rates.
I really thought she'd be here today because this one that was sticking around. And we told her that, you know, the lawn says nothing in the ground. This, I don't, I don't know. She said she's going to.
Does it like, it looks like a yard sign, like a campaign sign or something?
No. I don't know. But she put it along the, her thing, you know, the, what we said. Was there anything in there that was disturbing?
Oh, there's anything. No, probably coming in. Well, yeah. Usually allow that, and we're going to allow it, but yeah. I'll make a motion to allow the signs along there, not putting in T-posts in the ground.
Above ground.
Above ground, yeah.
Okay, so you, we have a motion and a second to allow the signs, but they can't go in the ground.
That's what I was thinking there, because we know.
That's what she signed it on. It's on there.
Okay, all in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
And then we have EMS hardship claim. You guys have a copy of this?
Yes. This seems like it's a retired individual, it's one that's done. This individual lives in Florida, is that what I read? Always say that we make them at least they have. This would be a different circumstance for me.
You're in favor of it? It's ayes.
Well, I just, I, I was going to kind of go along with what Steve said. I don't, I don't think this person has, it's like their own social security, and don't have really much income at all, once, it always available to them. I mean, it's up to your guys' pleasure what you want to do. Typically, you do have, but this might be an exception.
Well, I still think you, still people need to pay for their way, but I don't like the figure out. I said we deduct seven hundred and seventy dollars of this. This name sounds familiar. We deduct two-hundred and seventy, she pays filing.
Second. Okay, so the motion is deducted. They reduce this claim from two-hundred and seventy-five to five dollars. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passed. Okay, and the next slide, and that's it.
Okay. Looked at the, as a recommendation on the, on its contract, I meant that.
I looked over while I was up there. I think, I think Milestone is the cheapest. And I think as far as how, the job they do is about the same. So I was just going to go with that, that's. And we vote on this today, they can start center.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll take that under consideration, and I'd say that we'll give it Milestones underneath the supervisor of the highway.
Motion and a second to engage Milestone. All in favor of that motion, please say aye.
Aye.
There's two copies to sign.
Yeah.
Get it backed up and sign, and bring, bring them up to here. And Sheriff has something to bring up, so it's true, I think.
Probably the same thing. I said it's probably the same thing. Yeah, it's, it's about the groundbreaking. They're thinking July tenth is when they're going to ground break. And they have said that most places don't do a ceremony for that, for a jail. But that's kind of, you guys, I just need to know what, tell them what your wishes are about whether there's a groundbreaking.
Consensus between these two after we talk to Steve.
Okay, I'm ready to cut him up. Don't go through the guard. My thing on the agenda is animal control. Okay. We've got issues. Nobody will take our animals, the vets won't take them. No one's taking the animals. We've got, we, we got an animal control guy, he's new, he's doing his job. We've got nowhere to take them. Don't any nice talks. I went out to Little Farm, he talked about buying new buildings with the dog runs. They've got shelters, cages, they're metal. The frames are, the building was wood, but the cages themselves are metal. And for, I think it was a five or, I left the paperwork in my car, five or six dog run. It's twelve, like, twelve by twenty-five or thirty-two, like ten thousand dollars. He said his animal control guy can take care of the dogs when they're in there. He saves boarding fees, one-time payment of ten thousand, and dolphin, whatever, you got, that'd be able to share in that budget. But either we do this, or we're going to get rid of animals before we can. We have nowhere to take them. And our policy states after three days, we put them down. I'm a dog lover. I got three of my own and looking at a fourth.
Three days, you put it down?
Yeah, three days. And it's cheaper to do that way. That way the vet just comes and do their thing. And, but we're not even putting them down because we can't take them anywhere. So we're, we're not, we're not even, that's not been an issue yet. But we have nowhere to take them. And, and even if we do what Steve's talking about, it's going to have to be in an area where there's an additional fence. Let's, so let's pretend they get out of their, their enclosure, this, this building. There needs to be another fence. And it'll need to have water, some, some type of electric. And I was thinking like inside the fence, at the transfer station. There's already a fence there. I'm sure we could get water and electric relatively easy. If we're going to do something like that, that was my thought. And it is outside of town. And not farther out. You definitely should really do more reports on putting the dogs down, never address them. But just, it's a no-win situation. Uh, yeah, we took two, but there, so the, the two we took out there, if they have a, a, a separate pen, that if, if we take it stray there, and we can put it in that pen, it's a lot cheaper. But if they don't have that available, and she said, and I just had a meeting with her the other day, they have nothing available. They're big, they're big into boarding now, and they have nothing available. We still check every time something comes up. We check multiple places. But if they can't go in that confinement pen, we have to vaccinate them. We have to give them all these shots. We have to do stool samples. So a couple of dogs cost six hundred dollars roughly. And I'm just pulling that number out of my head. I forget how much it actually was. And that's for, that's for two dollars for a few days. And if we find the owner, they have to pay that. You know, that's, that shouldn't be a taxpayer's cost. But when it's not a tax, when, when you can't find an owner, that's, that's a lot of money. I think the entire budget for that is ten thousand dollars. So two dogs in the same weekend, probably in the same kennel, and it's six hundred dollars to have to have all these vaccinations. So fair, then we had our own little dog run. We can put it out there. Then if we have to euthanize, we can get our burner up and running, our incinerator, and we do it there. we can get our burner up and running, or incinerator, and we do it there. I know it's not what I'd like to do, but it's, we're out of options.
We should, we should talk to the county.
Because you don't know if you're gonna have one team.
I don't know, but that's my opinion, is it, I, I think we have kicked this around so long, we're gonna either have to do it or not do it, because...
Because there's a lot of pressure on...
I agree. We're, we're lucky right now that the gentleman that I've hired is retired, so he's not using his full budget. He's kind of on a on-call basis, uh, which is great, because we don't need him. Well, we may need him twenty-four seven. He comes out whenever we call him, and he's available, but...
He's uniformed and everything when he comes out, or?
Yeah, yeah. Polo shirt, badge, like the stuff I've seen him wearing, it's that's animal control.
All in favor, say aye. Yes, sir.
I do have an update, if we can, time permits, just three things.
Sure. We're behind on our other meetings, so...
It's true.
It did seem something by courtesy, but...
Um, broadband, just to give an update, we're moving quickly, uh, at the EDC. So broadband, we have fifteen hundred pole attachment requests that have been made to Carolide RMC. They're currently working through those to begin broadband process of hanging. So, we have a update with the, we have a call every month now, and so, we'll be sending that report over to you guys in your email. It's not anything comprehensive, but it's, here's where they've worked, and here's where they, here, how many poles and homes have been dashed. Um, we're still in that process of getting the poles, uh, good enough to be hung. So we, we don't have any, like, homes yet, but that's part of the reporting process. Uh, they're, they're indicating by late summer, we'll be able to start having drops for homes on phase one. Um, so if you go by Carolide RMC, obviously all this stuff's in, pole attachments have been submitted to Carolide, so, uh, that'll be ongoing monthly, uh, for the next three years. Uh, I would like to announce, there, there's nothing detailed necessarily that we can share, but we do have a purchase agreement, assigned purchase agreement on the Washington Industrial Park.
Awesome.
So, um, we, we gotta get to closing, financing's gotta get done, you guys understand how that works. So this could, this is, this is as far as we've ever been, so...
Is it land trade?
It's not a land trade, it's, it's, it's a, it's a company locating here. Um, so we're excited.
Congratulations.
But, well, this is part of the ways that, the furthest we've ever been, but we gotta get to closing, they've gotta get financed. Uh, so we've got about a hundred and twenty days left on the purchase agreement.
I don't think we're not on to that, go ahead.
Uh, we, they, they like, we're negotiating an abatement, it'll be a small abatement, so we'll, we'll approach the council at that time as well, on, on what that looks like, and share with you exactly what that financial package looks like. We just gotta get closer to closing. So, um, we're excited about that. We're also negotiating a, an MOU for another lot as well, so, with another company. So, things have, activities begin to, to pick up this year. Uh, and the Shell Building, we've had a pickoff meeting for that, um, and we're discussing what it should look like. Uh, if pre-cast tilt up, pre-cast offsite metal, pre-engineered eve heights, expandable. We wanna, we wanna look at doing fifty thousand per foot and then expandable to a hundred thousand, because that's gonna really fit the market. So, um, I will tell you, the private sector has picked up on Shell Buildings. They're building them all over the place. Um, so we, if we don't, we're just gonna fall back behind again, um, like we have on just a shovel, having shovel rigs, so I believe that is, go ahead.
I have a question. Who was running the, uh, the tubes, I think that was fiber, up and down the five hundred south to the...
So that's Mulberry, two communications. Yeah, so they're connecting up through, from Mulberry, and they're running north into, into Flora. You said five hundred south?
Yeah, they, they went all through Cutler.
Yep.
Down, they went right down past in front of my house, they get tubes up to the ground.
Yep. They'll be doing drops here this summer, so Cutler should be lit up, they should be able to get connected, and then Flora will be turned on as well, so...
So you just got a door, a door hanger about signing up for Mulberry by ground.
You did.
Yeah.
I didn't get one.
And I looked at their map, you, your, your residence should be in the map.
So we, I mean, the goal would be that we have plenty of provider, we saw what happened when Sparklight was down for three days. What, I mean, we had businesses closing.
Yeah.
Because we didn't have connectivity. So this is just all part of our plan, and, and it's just ugly enough, it's coming together. So with Mulberry doing their private investments broadly, providing...
It's pretty sad that when the internet goes down...
Yeah, it, it's gonna be a little painful with dirt turned over, and, and, but it's, it's part of necking up the media for the next few years, so...
All good news.
Thank you, Dr. Sugar.
And those emails I forwarded you, I don't believe what that was, so that's why, okay.
Quick, send away.
All right.
I've entered a motion, everyone.
So adjourned.
We're all in favor.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Trying.
Not keeping Randy Myers in line. It's not keeping Randy Myers in line. He won't send me restaurant inspections.
I'm gonna move over there, right?
No, I'm not gonna move.
I'll be sitting next to you there.
How chummy.
Yeah, I sit in the corner here, I don't like it down there.